Okay, this Lee County Warseton by the regular meeting July nineteen twenty twenty-two. Meeting now called to order. First on the agenda we got Park Memorial Report. Any questions, concerns on our reports? Okay, here and now we'll move on to public expression. Anybody here for public expression?
Mr. Chairman, is there a Mr. Edwards to talk on the agenda? I don't see it.
We amended the agenda. He talked to me Thursday morning and we were like getting the packets out, I failed to get it on there, so we amended it.
Okay. So we need to meet her.
Yeah, we've got him.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. Let's be on the agenda.
All right, got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Okay, here and now we'll move on to approval of minutes. May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two recess meeting, June seventh, twenty twenty-two recess meeting, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two recess meeting, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Add a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the agenda payroll, county administrator, reports of payroll warrants have been issued. And approval of dispersals is next.
Motion paid bills.
Okay, got a motion to pay, got a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda will be Lee County Drug Court funding request from Mr. Greg Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Greg Edwards. Mr. Cleveland couldn't be here to not ask me to send his regards. I hate to come this late requesting this, but we didn't find out on the grant for the drug court program coordinator, the state cut out all mileage. And the judges called and tried to argue, apparently they now changed the name of the way to the recovery court. Every recovery court is the only one that serves multiple localities. Every other court has coordinator at the courthouse. We do not. And we've been getting the benefit of Wise County person for years with state approval, and the county hadn't put anything towards that. The Commonwealth Attorney's Office has conducted golf tournaments and has raised some monies, but in doing that, it is presented this is go directly to the participants, and we have been using those for drug tests, paying people to do random drug screens, incentives, and other items like that. We have everybody on the drug courts volunteer, no one gets any pay, we do not take any seminars, we do not do anything, and we're very stingy with the money, we want to keep trying to give it back. But what has happened would be, they cut out mileage, and our coordinator comes in from Wise. And it's very important that she gets to know our people. Right now, we have five people in drug court or recovery court scattered from all over the county, from Keokhae all the way to Wheeler. And they are doing very good. Seems like, as with anyone who first comes in the program, you have to get their attention, but now they seem to be on the path, and I'm hoping that this may be our most successful group later. Knock on wood on that, I don't want to jinx it. But what we're requesting is some mileage money, say four thousand dollars on the upside, just in case, you know, gas prices have greatly gone up, and we don't want it just for mileage. We're not requesting for anything else, just for the coordinator. If we don't use it, all of it comes back to the county. It's very important that she develops rapport with these people to know what they're thinking, what they're doing, meet them face to face, because on Zoom meeting, you can't get to know people like you do when you in person and what they're thinking. So what we're requesting, if you would, give us up to four thousand dollars of mileage for the coordinator. I know for several years, we haven't asked for anything, because we've been using the other monies, but this is something that came up just unexpectedly, and I apologize, but I'm here begging on behalf of the recovery court for four thousand dollars. And I'll take any questions that I can answer.
What are you asking for, just the state rate, whatever the state rate is?
Whatever the state rate is, is what we're getting.
Anybody else got any question?
Pardon?
I guess that's all the questions.
Okay.
You got that lucky.
Huh?
You got that lucky.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve funding for up to four thousand dollars for mileage.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate it, and I'll be out here to have one less line on here.
I appreciate what you guys agree with.
Thank you.
If it's agreeable for the motion and the second, we'll state that as a supplemental appropriation to the budget, otherwise we'll have to come back and do that as a separate item like yourself. And that typically the way we handle our funds since they're donations, we put those into line out, we'll separate this into a create a new line out of this for mileage, and again, it will only be paid out as it's requested.
Okay. Next on the agenda is finance supplemental appropriations.
Chairman, these are all requested supplements for the prior fiscal year. The first one covers checks written directly out of the treasurer's office for overpayments and different things. Also, board approved refunds in the amount of fifty-two thousand, nine twenty-two fifty-one. That probably was the entire year, at least the better part of the year. The second one is supplemental appropriation for the prior year for Head Start. They received three hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents above what was budgeted. And then the four there is another line between those two, there's one for coal rolling severance funds or gas severance taxes, first makes twelve hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. And then the final one is a budget supplement from reserves, thirteen thousand, three eighty-three twenty-three, to cover over expenditures, over budget expenditures for transportation fees for solid place for the prior year. We had fuel surcharge that kicked in almost partway through the year, so that increased the travel, or transportation expense more than what we had budgeted.
Make a motion to approve supplemental appropriations.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, new business, first board, our board appointments, number one, long sign off on you?
That's, that needs to be deleted. I didn't catch that, that was from last month, but that, those we're taking care of.
Okay. All right, next we got listed airport authority.
Make a motion to table that.
Okay, got a motion to table?
Second.
Add a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mountain Park Community College.
I have one, Mr. Chairman, Ellen Pillion, she's resigned at post. Joyce Williams, let's see if I can replace her.
Okay, we got a motion to point Joyce Williams.
Second.
Add a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, these ones that don't hear, do they have to come off, do they have to be replaced?
Ms. Elliott has fulfilled, she served two terms, she's not eligible for reappointment. Ms. Pillion requested to be replaced, and Mr. Boone was actually reappointed last month, and his letter of resignation crossed in the mail, it was dated, it predated our meeting, but we did not receive it until about two or three days after the meeting.
Oh, he resigned?
Yes.
I make a motion, we can table over to next month.
Would you consider appointment I brought up last night? I brought up Kristi, Kristi, Kristi last time, hey, Kristi Tyler.
Yeah, fine.
Want to make a motion on like Kristi Tyler?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I make a motion to table the last one.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll forbid your able to this conversation.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just to be clear, that will go as a recommendation to the circuit court judge to make the formal
Okay, next we got Southwest Virginia nine one one Standards Committee.
Are all three of those up?
Yes.
I make a motion, we reappoint Mike Twain, Billy Kate Tomlin, and Dane Pope.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is Engineers Task Orders for landfill launch during the court.
Chairman, two task orders there, there's actually three tasks, two and one. In the first task order, twenty-two oh two, task one in that is completion of the annual landfill groundwater monitoring report, which is required by Department of Environmental Quality. That task has an estimated cost of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Task two is included in that because it's also a water quality related issue. During the reporting year twenty twenty, in both sampling events for that year, we had an exceedance for the ground protection standard for cobalt, so this requires a plan of action to be completed and submitted to DEQ. The estimated cost for that, it's on an hourly basis, is six thousand dollars. Then task order twenty-two dash oh three is for completion of our annual landfill gas monitoring report, which also is required by DEQ. That has a fixed cost of twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Total estimated cost for completion of both task orders and all three tasks is twenty-two
I do, these are all mandatory reports, and if we don't submit them, we'll incur penalties.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Task order number twenty-two dash zero two. Okay, I got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we got PD one Behavioral Health Services Performance Contract.
As in past years, you have a copy of their performance contract. It's a two-year contract, this is negotiated between the Behavioral Health Services and the state, but yet it has to be approved at the local level by all localities served by their service district. There is a resolution of approval enclosed for your consideration. There's about two hundred pages of information there on that performance contract. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I've read it all, but it, again, this is a code requirement. The county has no, none of the counties in PD one have a role other than the appointed members to the community services board in negotiating this contract, but it does require approval by all localities served.
Is there any issue hypothetically if we were to table it to next month?
Pardon?
Is there any issue if we were to table it to next month?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I'm not sure if code has changed, there was a stipulation in code, I'd have to check that code section to see if it's still there, that if all localities do not approve it by a certain date, sometime I think in November, then the state assumes it's approved anyway.
That's resolution twenty-two dash zero one four.
I make a motion that we approve that resolution. Twenty-two dash zero one four.
Okay, we got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the reassessment contract. Okay.
I request a closed session for that.
Resolution. Smart scale.
Okay. Sorry. Resolution of support for smart scale project.
Chairman, you have a resolution of support for the proposed smart scale project applications for this year being submitted by the county, the final submission only due August the first. The two projects include creating offset left turn lanes on US fifty-eight A at Trade Center Lane, that's at the Walmart entrance off of fifty-eighth, and the second project is intersection improvement, such Route eight seventy-nine and Dr. Thomas Walker Road. This is that Thomas Walker High School side road there, the secondary road, which is the service road to the parking lot. Along with that, there is a resolution of support just for those two projects, those two projects are being submitted by the county. There is a third project, the one that we talked about quite a bit. I've included an updated sketch of the Penning Gap project, which consists of a proposed roundabout at Highway fifty-eight or West Morgan Avenue and North Combs Road, this is the hospital intersections, and then center turn lanes along portions of West Morgan Avenue. There's a portion of it that's just east of the hospital, runs out to, in that little business area there, most of the businesses are on the south side of the road, but you have the insurance agency there on the north side as well. And then also, there would be left turn lanes between Cecil and Harrington Streets out near Wash House, Norton Floral, those businesses in that area. I've included the sketch for that project, and if you want, if you want to talk about these separately, we can do that. The project in Penning Gap is actually being submitted by the planning district commission, that's an option this year in smart scale that hasn't been there in the past. It actually enables you to have an additional project submitted by an entity representing the region, so that's one that Innuisco has stepped up to. I did receive feedback from the town penic from today, the town manager reported at the town council, I think last night, voted unanimously to support the project there in town. As it's proposed, I'm sorry for sketches being so small, or the handwriting, but what they sent, and this is as large as I could get on the paper I had to work with, but that actually, if this project is funded and constructed, it would result in the one business there, Norton Floral, actually that property would be a take in order to create the turn lanes that they need down in that particular area. But again, this has gone to four town council, and they are fully supportive of that project, so I would ask you to consider the resolution that's included in your package, which is twenty-two oh fourteen, for the two projects that we're submitting, one at Walmart and one at Thomas Walker.
We just voted on twenty-two fourteen.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's change the numbers. We'll make that in twenty-two fifteen, and this other will be sixteen.
Make a motion to accept the resolution.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a separate resolution of support for the Penning Gap project, if you want to act on it, although, even though, I'll say, the county is not technically submitting the project, and the planning district would be submitting it, VDOC still requests resolutions of support from the government body. I think the town of Penning probably took similar action last night on adopting a resolution of support for that project. So that, it's same verbiage as the resolution that you just adopted, this the senior project instead of the other two. And one other thing I failed to mention, one of the things that has changed about this project in looking at it, VDOC has stepped up a little bit, and you'll note that the town of Penning has constructed a sidewalk segment there from about Harrington Street, I guess, out about a block or two. That's the first phase of that project. That project is scheduled to be completed all the way to the hospital. The town right now has to provide match funds for that, I'm not sure what the full amount is, but they do have to provide match funds. In this proposal, VDOC has designed this project so that they would pick up the remainder of that sidewalk project with this turn lane and roundabout project, and bear a hundred percent of the cost of that, and they don't have no cost there. And also keep in mind that these projects are being submitted, they still have to go through the scoring process if they are funded. It will be six years before they're constructed.
Do you think it hurts to submit this one with the other two, we're more likely to get funded on the other two, we don't submit this one?
Not really. This one, this is pushing the dollar value higher than the other projects. This one's going to be more costly, so, you know, if it becomes a funding issue, it's primarily about scoring, but it's also about funding, so some smaller projects could potentially get funded because there's not enough money to fund the larger projects.
So I correct that the resolution as it's drafted has department, we didn't want the roundabout?
It includes the full project. VDOC at this point does not want to separate the project out, and basically, their feeling is that without the roundabout, there's, the accident scores are pretty high out on that end, and if you take that out of it, then the rest of the project's probably not going
I make a motion, we approve resolution of support for smart scale project twenty-two dash zero one six.
Okay, you got a motion, got a second? Yeah, second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is a date for a joint meeting with town Penning Gap.
We initially talked about first couple of weeks in July, that got away from us. The town, the town council said, I believe it's pretty much up to the board to set a date and time, that they would all retire or not working, and they could pretty much meet anytime, so.
You opposed?
I don't, no. I don't know your all schedules.
You what?
I don't know your all schedules. I will update you on one other thing, as you're talking about scheduling dates. The proposed sale of real estate, office equipment, things that Roman Institute building, and surplus vehicles, I think there's three surplus vehicles plus one, but the sheriff is going to do a sheriff sale on it, we'll combine with that. The real estate aspect of it requires a public hearing, trying to be able to sell it. So that will, we'll have to schedule a public hearing, that will take two advertisements, and we can schedule it, you know, as long as I've got time to get it in the newspaper, we can break that out, have it prior to the August regular meeting, or we can have it at the August regular meeting, whichever way you want to do it.
September, August meeting?
I sort of told you, will that be in?
I can't, they said I care, they said, I can't do their last.
Their meeting should be the nineteenth.
Their meeting be the nineteenth?
Should be the third.
Okay, the third, okay.
Ninety before yours.
Okay.
I thought they meant the same as this. How about thirteen? Or you said they could do the whole week?
I can. Can't do thirteen.
Well, what time do they meet?
Six.
Six. Sort of say if you wanted to meet early, the, you might want more than an hour to do it, I don't know if everybody could be there by four o'clock or not, I just thought they might want to wipe it all out on that, but they may not be there that long.
You all posted Friday?
Yeah, I am.
How about the twenty-seventh, September?
I'm going to get out your. Sounds good. Is it going to be here or there, I said there?
I thought it would probably be better to meet with them at their location, and I think it would probably, the layout's a little more amenable to two bodies together instead of one up there and one down here.
When do they meet at?
They meet at town hall.
We'll call it about six o'clock, something like that?
That's probably a pretty good time.
About good to you all? Okay, reports and recommendations of county attorney.
I'll just report to the board that I have submitted a memo to the agent's office requesting an opinion for clarification of the tax levy issue. They reached out last week for a little clarification as to what our, when our taxes were levied, whether it was on the calendar of fiscal year. I asked then when we could expect the opinion, and she couldn't give me a date, and then since then, Chuck has reached out, that it kind of came to his attention that it was up there, and I asked him, and he told me that best case scenario, it would be the first of August, so I don't know that we will have anything before then, if then, hopefully by then, but just wanted to let the board know what the status of that is at this point.
Anybody have any questions on that? No?
No.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay. Next, reports and recommendations of the county administrator?
Uh, just a request for closing session on contracts, all I have.
Okay. Uh, then we'll move on to reports and recommendations of the board.
I'd like to, uh, in closed session, discuss personnel.
Okay. Me too.
Two things. One, I put it everyone's station, the little packet on. The bipartisan infrastructure law, uh, I think fairly recently passed by Congress regarding sixty-five billion dollars in funding to help connect the last mile on the internet. I'm not sure what we're eligible for there, but I'd like to, uh, put the EDA director in charge of making an opinion, uh, about what we are, uh, entitled to, what we may be able to get, and to report back to us on why or why not we're, uh, the money's available to us. And if he thinks it is an action plan, what we should do, it's something that Scott County Telephone or anyone else who wants to provide it or any.
Dane, correct me if I'm wrong, but is Scott County Telephone, they've already put in for some of that money, I thought? I think that's part of the body grants that they-
I don't know if that's tied up with the body grant or not.
I thought it was state money that they give them.
Well, it is state money, but I don't know if the federal money is flowing to them through stuff. I don't know. Have a check with them and see.
That was kind of my understanding when I talked with them, but, and they may provide Richard needs to be with them anyway, and, you know, look at what the overall place is.
Is that okay with you, Dane? I don't know. I make that a motion. Have Richard report back to us on that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I had a complaint about trash, uh, dumpsters at Flatwoods, about people digging through. Someone reported it the other day. There was four people digging through at the same time, that people were waiting on them to get out of the cans before they throw their trash away. Uh, we put cameras up at Blackwater. As I understand it, the cameras work pretty good, which we don't have internet in Flatwoods. But I guess it's now in the Department of Animal Control, since they're doing litter. Uh, I think it'd be appropriate for them to make a recommendation on some cameras to try out. I'd be fine with trying it out just at Flatwoods to, you know, see how they work, does the battery last or whatever? How do they lock them? How does it, can you see what, you know? Try it out for a few months at Flatwoods, and if it works, to put them elsewhere. But I, I think the only way to really be able to combat it is for somebody to be able to say, you know, have it up on the sign that if you see somebody dumpster diving, report it to here. And then animal control would just have to look and say, you know, I've got a call that somebody was digging at six o'clock on Saturday and roll it back and see if you can identify and charge them. And but you can't have somebody sit there and, if, well, we've had this discussion before, if we don't expect, which I expect them to do it, but if we don't expect the attendants to report this stuff, then somebody has to do it.
So, what about, how, how close did I go from here with that, that side, but how close is five or two?
Probably not very far.
Would you have any idea, Dane?
It runs to the airport, so it has to run by.
It has to be close by there. I don't-
So, I wouldn't, probably, if it's that close, then we should be able to get-
Uh, yeah, I checked with Matthew to see if he can get that.
If, I would rather do it the way we do Blackwater and have it recorded and, uh, off-site. If we can, I guess if we have the internet, we might be able to do that.
Yeah.
That's what you use in one Blackwater, huh?
Yeah, I guess the difference there is that it's the, uh, the hardware is actually in the building at, let's see, uh, Fire Hall. You know, they're like two hundred feet apart, so it just beams it up there, and it's recorded up there, and it's locked up. I don't know if there's a way to, I could, you can do the same thing at the airport, can't you? You, you video it from there, but you save it here?
We don't save it here now. You can read, you, you can go back on it, but, you know, we can view it. I can pull those cameras up on my phone right now.
But I'm saying, once you go back on, is that hardware here or there?
Uh, it's there.
Well, I, I don't have the answers on the technology. It's something for animal control to look into. I think like this recommendation, maybe they can get Rex to help them with looking into what is the right stuff to use.
Is that okay with you, Dane?
It's fine by me. As long as they just come for us first instead of going first and stuff.
Uh, and the other thing is to look at the signage there. Some of the signage at these places, you can't even really read anymore. I'd like for them to look at that and see if, make sure it does say that you're not allowed to do that, so we can charge people under local code with it and to report that back to us too. And I'll make all that in form of motion.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have in closed session.
Okay. Y'all ready for?
Yeah, Mr. Pope, uh, I appreciate if you contact VDOC and get them to mow the sides of the road. Basically at fifty-eight where I live, I don't know if they mowed it this year or not. I can't remember, but if they did, it looked like they took a push mower and just went on along the white lines and mowed it. It's not that wide.
And the grass is just high.
I'd check with them and see. The, uh, primary roads, uh, they been through here. I know they did pick, I mean, they did all of the four lane. Uh, and I would assume they did all of the primary roads at that same time, but-
They mowed it. It's been a long time. They must mowed it back in February.
Well, if so, I think they mowed that, I don't know if it's two times a year or three times a year now, but I'll check and see.
I think it's two.
Yeah.
They used to mow three now.
I think they managed to down to two, and they hit it fairly early in the year, and then they don't get it again till right before or after frost.
Because they can't wait that long on this road.
Well, it wasn't rural, but when they hit it, but when they hit it, they hit it about fifteen mile an hour, so they didn't do nothing but just kind of knock it down.
Yeah. I'll, I'll check on them.
You know, I mentioned that to Mr. Mannings when he was here at our meeting, and what was gonna happen when they went back to those contractors, exactly what's gonna happen, and indeed, it has happened. You can't even see half the signs that's up and down highway. I'd say you read one that, uh, transfer station, or, you know, the facility's better than most states' sign.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Ain't that true? God, I don't have anything else.
I'll bring up some personnel also. Yeah, I make a motion to go in a closed session for sentence two point two, test thirty-seven eleven, sub eight one. Mayable eight, consti- official, including counsel. Twenty-nine new contracts.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?